I've been there.
Okay, I'm going to not call to order, but I'm going to continue on with the regional school committee meeting of Wednesday, December 20th, 2017. First item on the agenda is the action on minutes. Paul?
I move that we approve the minutes of the open meeting on November 15th.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucko, seconded by Joan. Are there any suggestions? Any comments? Okay, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Next is educational policy, the request of staff member for her child to attend Algonquin Regional High School.
Yes, Madam Chair, in keeping with past practice, you will find in your packet a letter from Christina Conley, an outstanding member of our science department for many years, requesting that her son be allowed to enter his freshman year at Algonquin. You might be asking, how many students do we have from parents? This would be the seventh next year.
From teachers.
From teachers.
Paul?
I move, as has been our policy, that we accept and approve the request from Christina Conley that her son be allowed to attend Algonquin.
Second. Moved by Paul Bucko, seconded by Dan. Any suggestions? All those in favor? That passes unanimously.
And I'll let her know tomorrow. I'm sure she will be static.
Congratulations. Thank you. On next to new business, the ELE presentation.
It's that time of the year, and we invite Rhoda Webb, our district-wide coordinator, to present very appropriately the summary of our English language learners in our regional school. She has presented at both Northborough and Southborough.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to give you an update of our English learners here at Algonquin. An English learner is a student whose first language is not English and who is currently not able to perform ordinary classroom, ordinary classwork in English. That's, the federal definition is a lot more detailed than the state definition. So any student exposed to another language needs to be tested for English language proficiency because we have to guarantee that the student is able to access the content in all academic areas. When a student doesn't have the English language proficiency at grade level that is needed, the student qualifies as an English learner, and we are required to provide special programming for our English learners. The program that we have in our districts is called Structured English Immersion, which consists on two parts, the English Language Development, or ESL, and Structured Content Instruction. This means that a student must receive English Language Development, or ESL, taught by an ESL licensed teacher and placed in SEI classrooms, that is classrooms where the teacher has an SEI endorsement, and scaffolds instruction according to the language proficiency of the student. So English learners, as we, as we know, are not a homogeneous group, no, do they have a fixed profile. So there are many factors that we take into consideration when working our students, and we take pride in getting to know our students and our families or guardians very well here at Algonquin and both in our districts of Northborough and Southborough in our K-8 schools. We do know that students joining us at the high school level are doing double the work, and they enter the four years of high school, that is, if they have four years, needing to graduate and also needing to learn the English language. Something that is not as apparent is that students coming to us need to acculturate to their new country and to the new language, and those are different stages that our students go through. And we have a very welcoming school, and we're very used to having children coming from all different countries and different languages, which really provides for a rich diversity of both languages and cultures. Many of our students, if I look at what's happening this year, we've had seven new students join us, and when tested for language proficiency, they all qualified at the foundational level, which is levels one, two, three, meaning that they've come with no English at all, or at the word level or simple sentence level. So the guidance department and Ms. Suker and Mrs. Stimson, because gratefully, we were able to add an English Language Development teacher to Algonquin, and it couldn't come at a better timing because of the growth that we have seen, but also, as I will show you in a few minutes, 50% of our English learners are at that foundational level, so levels one, two, three. So there's a lot of work that both the students and the teachers are putting in place and have to do. And what is remarkable about the students that we work with is that every day they express gratitude. They thank their teachers, they're serious students, they're here at school, their attendance is very good, they're staying after school, and working very hard in order to be able to achieve the levels that they need to, and eventually graduate. So if you look at the first graph in your handout, what it's showing is that the dark gray bars, to date, we have 22 active English learners, and the light gray bar is 49 reclassified students. The reason that we're including them is that our English Language Development teachers need to monitor the students that we've reclassified for four years, and that means being in touch with all content area teachers to make sure that the students continue to make progress in their learning. So the total number that we're looking at at Algonquin right now is 71. If we take into account of what is happening in our other two districts, we'll look at, there are over 185 English learners at this time, and if we take in, bear in mind the students that we're also monitoring, we're looking at around 269 students to date. We also bear in, look at the trend of students that, who are English learners from both the middle schools coming to Algonquin as we make plans for the upcoming school year. If you take a look at the second page in your packet, that would show the languages at Algonquin, and it's a reflection, we do have more languages and higher numbers than this, but these are the students that are English learners or have been reclassified within the four years that I was talking about. So we'll see that Portuguese and Spanish are our prevalent languages, but look at the diversity of students coming from all over the world, which is a great opportunity for us to learn from each other about our languages and our cultures, because to actually truly learn a language is to understand its culture and behave in culturally appropriate ways, no matter where you are. The next graph in your packet, the third one, that's when I mentioned that 50% of our students are at the foundational level. So the first three bars are the levels of language proficiency. So developmentally, no matter the age, in learning a language, a student may start with not knowing a language or knowing a language, just a few words, in a language, a few phrases, all the way to levels five and six, where now the student is speaking, writing, especially academic writing, because that's the last domain to, to be able to reach full proficiency in the language, and it's one of the criterias that we looked at in order to reclassify a student, is to be able to write at the essay levels with complex compound sentences, with academic and the specific technical language that is needed in every single content area. So, as I was saying, 50% of our students, we're looking at levels one, two, and low three. The development, developing level is divided into two because it's a very long stage, so that's what the department recommends, calling the first three stages, including low development, developing, the foundational level, and the next three stages are high developing, and then the reach, the expanding, and the bridging. So that would be another 50%, but as you see this date, of course, a student doesn't stay static at a level, they go changing and go growing as the months go by, but right now, it's really until, up to level four. So you can see the tremendous amount of work and the collaboration that happens at all levels at the high school for our students to be learning. As I mentioned, the addition of a second English Language Development teacher has been huge. Last year, I was able to report that because students could not access, not because they didn't, could, did not know the content, because they didn't have enough English to access, US history, we began an introduction to US history, which is focused on the language of history, so that students the following year would be able to be, take US history. This year, having a second teacher and addressing the language proficiency levels of the students, we have three co-talk classes, and that's thanks to the two teacher, ELD teachers that we have. So we have one co-talk biology, meaning a licensed ESL biology teacher and an ESL licensed teacher, co-planning and co-teaching the class, and two co-talk math classes. The other ESL teacher with two math teachers, also with planning time and co-teaching those classes. So that the level of language proficiency is not going to impede the children from learning the content areas. These are students that also stay after school to be able to have more time to learn. As I said, we don't just work with the students, we involve parents and guardians, parent conferences. If the parents are learning English, we provide interpreters so that they are fully involved and understand our schooling system here, and of course, they're fully engaged and want their students, their children, to do well in our schools. We also are able to recommend adults ESL classes for parents who would like to learn more English. We had our first international night last spring here with over 300 guests, we're planning a second one for this year. And the interesting thing is that we had many high school students volunteer at this event, and we also had bilingual, English, Spanish, English, Portuguese, high school volunteers interpreting for our families. Speaking of the importance of languages as well, for all students who are interested in learning languages, we're looking at implementing the seal of illiteracy, which means that an English learner who has already, comes to us with another language and literacy in another language, and is able to prove that to us, and also receives proficiency in English, can graduate from high school with a seal on their diploma. But the beautiful thing about this, it brings together, another, brings two worlds together, our learners, our English speakers, sorry, who already have proficiency in English and who are learning another language and can demonstrate proficiency in another language will also be able to graduate with that seal. So we'll have more information in the months to come. When I mention that our students, our English learners, are really thanking our teachers every day for the work that they do in teaching them, this summer, we had, in August, we had a three-week session for English learners to come to summer school, and we had 15 students come. And I would say it's the commitment of the students to want to learn and to know that they, that their dedication, because they're high schoolers and they could have stayed at home. So we had students walking, we had a student ride his bicycle, and they were there every day. So this is where we are right now. We know that it's, it's just a matter of time, and we're going to have more students come, but what is beautiful is the collaboration that happens at every single level, the collaboration with guidance, with all our administrators, everybody working together in our community in order for our students to be able to receive a wonderful education at our high school. So thank you for the opportunity for letting me share.
Dan? Questions? Come on, Paul.
I love this proposal, this presentation, we get it every year. The melting pot that, that we are is just, is fascinating to me, that, I mean, we've got 20 different languages being spoken here at any, at any one point in time, I mean, it's just, it's absolutely amazing to me, to be commended for, for the work, it's, must be tough. I, I do have a question on the, I just noticed that this, this presentation go around, the entering English learners-
Yes.
-that get four and a half hours per week of minimum support, if they're struggling with the language that much, I mean, how effective is the rest of their school time? I mean, is it, I, you know, it must be, it must be very difficult for them.
It is. It's, that, it's a very good question. So we mindfully plan the English Language Development courses for Level 1, 2, for Levels 3, for Levels 4. So they do have two or three periods a day of English Language Development, the introduction to US history, and then they've got their math class and their science, and of course, the elective. So it's really sitting down with guidance and really looking at what that, every student needs individually in order to be able to graduate. So it's very hard, you're right about that, because they have to navigate the high school, they don't have enough English, but that's where I think many years of working this way and the empathy that there is at the high school to be able to understand how hard it is to come and not understand what is being said to you.
And, and I just got the impression from your answer, and maybe I'm wrong, but that this minimum, minimum four and a half hours a week is the number that we blow by in terms of support that we, that we give?
No, no, actually, we don't, we don't. We're, we're meeting the requirements by the Department of Education in the coursework that they, that we are providing for the students.
Okay.
So those hours are, are really mapped out, out in their, in their schedules.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joan?
I know at the elementary level, there is a yearly test that is administered to the students. Is there also one at the high school that has to be administered?
Yes.
And is it yearly, or how is it?
It is yearly, and it is the same, it's the Access 2.0.
Okay.
Yes, so the, our high school students will be taking it online, the window for testing opens on January 4th and ends February 7th, so they do, they're tested in the four language domains, so yes, thank you for asking that.
So that extra support person that has been added is a very, is very beneficial, because you see that we've increased students from 50 to 71.
Yes.
An extra 21 students, so that second ESL teacher, ESL teacher is a benefit also into that testing domain, correct?
It couldn't have come at a better time, exactly, yes, yes. We're trying to minimize the, the time that we are losing, the children are losing instruction, so it is very planful that one student, one teacher will be testing, the other teacher will continue with the schedule, and they'll swap off.
Okay.
They really cannot lose time on instruction.
Definitely. And to follow up to Paul's, is there anything after school that is offered for these students? Because as Paul was saying, if it's only 4.5 hours, is there anything offered after school in the support group for them?
Yes, in addition to that, the Title III grant, which provides supplemental, we can use it to supplement what we are required to provide as a district, for example, our summer program. We have two after-school programs in place right now at the high school on two different days. One is a focus on math, and the other is a focus on content, because a student is able to understand content in, in his language, and that group is going to grow as well, and so, and then is able to do well on the tests in English, because he, the student does understand the content. So we are able to do that out of the Title III grant, and of course, the students also stay additionally at other days with the ELD teachers or with content teachers.
So is that a grant that you have written?
In collaboration with Mr. Martino, yes.
Congratulations on it, that's another financial benefit to our, us and to the district, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the hard work.
Lynn?
I'm just, it just amazes me how you come to school in a language you can't, high school level entering into this country, you don't understand the language, and all these different languages, it's hard for me to comprehend how we can address the needs, but yes, training. Just to kind of follow up with Joan on the, or the question, the testing takes place in January?
Yes.
So what happens like between September and January?
So the students are, are taking their courses, their, their required courses, you know, according to the schedules, the English Language Development and all the content area courses, and it's an annual test. So what we look at is their growth in English from one year, January, to the following year, when they take it again the following January. So it's just one measure to be able to see how the students are progressing.
So, so when a student comes into the district brand-new-
Yes.
...like to us in September, they wouldn't have had a test, like to-
Right, so internally, we do, the state requires us to give a language proficiency test, which we can, and we keep data on all that, so by the time we get the score back of the access test, which is in May, we're able to measure growth, because the instrument that we're using, required by the department, and the access test are aligned, so we are able to measure growth of the students.
Right, so, but if you're coming in new in, in September, how do, how do we assess how much support we need to give the student if they hadn't been tested?
Yes.
Do we, do they have a test, like, that we give them?
Yes.
Initially, like at the beginning of the school year?
We, we have to use, it's called a language proficiency screener.
Okay.
It's called the, the WIDA screener, and it's required by the department. So we look at that measure, and it's testing the language proficiency level in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. So we have a score, and a student that comes in with no English, we know exactly what scheduling that student needs, and by the time we receive the score of the access test, there may have been some growth or not. When you come with no English, you might have grown a little bit, but we're able to then measure the, for the, by the following year, and we have our internal assessments as well.
Okay, so they get something that is tied to the school year?
Yes, they do.
Bobby?
This is fantastic, by the way, I appreciate this report. How, do they, at, when they go, when they leave the school and they go home, they're obviously talking their native language, correct? So is it, do, do they go home with things that they listen to to keep up the English? Or how do, you know what I mean, like, because they're probably taking a couple steps forward, but then going home and taking a couple step, you know what I mean, taking a step back? So how does it?
So, of course, the students have homework, and they can access online, and so there's a lot that can be done, that is done virtually with the students as well. So, as I said, most of our students are staying after school, they're engaged in activities, engaged in sports and different clubs, so they are exposed to, to a lot of English in, in multiple settings.
I mean, our families are 100%, our most families 100% on board with the, you know what I mean, with them, I know that they have to learn English, but-
Right, right.
I work, I do work with a foundation, and we go into different places, we give grants for, for, for this. One of the hard parts that they have is their, the kids going home, and they're not speaking English there.
Okay.
You know what I mean, so, and sometimes they get, the parents, they want them to learn English, but they're not willing to learn themselves, so it's just a hard communication between-
Right, so I think we know our families well, so we're not in competition, it's very important that, that the home language is not lost, especially you don't want communication lost between parents or guardians and the students, so that there's no language in the home, so that common language, but our families are there for their children's education, so there is full support with everything that we do. And as I said, our parents are coming to, parent, we even have coffees for just our parents who are new to the country, so that we can get to know them, they understand our, their schooling, and we can talk about concerns that they have as the children are being raised here in the United States. Did I answer your question?
You did. Yeah. Dan?
When it comes to MCAS, so there are students that may be in a certain grade that have to take the MCAS, but how does that work if they're still not ready to fully read English?
So the students have to take MCAS anyway, we're able to interpret directions, and the way that we view it, everything that we're doing is helping the students do as well as they can on MCAS. Of course, it's very difficult when you do not have the language to be able to pass MCAS, but what it affords our students at the high school level is to be able then to retake MCAS the following year, a few months later, and by then, their English has grown. And actually, our results on MCAS are very good, in the sense that, as I mentioned, our students are very committed, they're working very hard, so they may not pass the first time, they may not pass the second time, but then the rate for students to be able to pass MCAS for graduation has been very good.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 2018-19 school calendar discussion, I think we've covered in the combined meeting, so we will move on to participant one. Very colorful report, no doubt. I'll turn this over to Dr. Walsh.
Thank you, good evening. So I, I know I got it down to two pages front and back, but I'm going to sneak in some stuff that I'm going to add on, so it may be going over two pages, but it's just such an exciting time of year here at Algonquin. I'm going to start off with some announcements from our finance department, you can see towards the bottom of academics, we had 21 of our students selected for the Massachusetts Central District Assembly, which is coming up next month, and that's very exciting. And along that note, the Northborough Cable Access Television with Kathy and Dana's support, working with Ms. Collins, the department head for fine arts, have a 15-minute video of various musical talents singing and playing holiday melodies. We played this at home in the background while we made holiday treats, it was fantastic, I highly recommend it, it's up there, the link is there, it's a true testament to the work that goes on in our fine arts department. And I would be amazed if I didn't say that tomorrow night is our holiday festival concert here at the school. It starts at 7 o'clock in the rotunda with some great artwork, some caroling, the school, the calendar that they show and sell, and then it moves to the auditorium at 7:30, so just putting that flag in there for fine art, so hopefully you can make it. Moving on to athletics, super exciting that, as you know, we had many wins, some great accomplishments, but more importantly, we had our fall sports, participation rate had increased, which you heard Mr. Witten talk about. That trend has continued into our winter sports. Kittos are involved in sports, they're engaged in extracurricular activities, and they're enjoying their time. Equally so, when we had our fall pep rally, we made a push this year to make it extremely inclusive, so fall pep rally sometimes can be focused just around athletics, not so here at Algonquin. We took the time to recognize different activities, different events, we recognized the four student leaders who won the courage essay contest from the summer reading, the whole school stood up and recognized the four students who had earned the award for each grade on the greatest essay submitted regarding the theme of courage. And so that just shows that athletics is expanding to include everyone, as you've heard them do with their athletic student council. So just wanted to give a shout out to that, and of course, our forewarners, which you can see later on in the English department updates. Some activities and club updates, our community action program club, called CAP, is very active in our community, they were out at the senior center preparing for Thanksgiving, they returned again to prepare, prepare for some of the holiday events, I put a little picture in there, they were having so much fun, I wanted to make sure I shared that. We also had DECA host their Young Professionals Networking Night, huge support from the community. We had many of our community business leaders come and network with their students, and I definitely had to sneak in a picture of our superintendent, who passed what I call the torch of DECA, which was one of her beloved original DECA sweatshirts, onto our current DECA advisor, Ms. Riley, it was a very emotional and wonderful moment, so we captured it. Our National Business Honors Society held their fifth induction, and along, as you can see, is a theme of us this year, that induction ceremony had 35 new members, which again is one of our larger chapters to date, and you saw that with some of our other induction ceremonies that we've had this year, so it's a wonderful trend to continue, and we hope to push that forward. Under some department updates, our Applied Arts and Technology with Ms. Ruffo's Fashion, Retail, and Design Class, they completed the immense task of designing and outfitting the entire cast of Legally Blonde. All of our items for Legally Blonde were in-house, it was very inclusive, they used some of our carpentry work, our choreographic work, our artwork, our own band performed at the performance, and it really helped unite the school together to be a part of the overall performance and the success, really utilizing the different skill set across of, across our educators. Plus, as we're speaking about Ms. Ruffo, her and Ms. Maul, along with NHS, created, they worked with the Giving Tree, they donated over 300 toys to local families for our student, for our children in need to have, and they also worked with Mr. Brosnan and his student leaders, who had a secondary toy drive, in which they were able to raise toys for the Yuville House in Worcester. So the giving and the support of the community and the modeling of our parents and our students was phenomenal, so they were able to produce numerous toys. The entire sophomore class banded together to buy two bikes to donate, because that was what was on the Giving Tree, and they came to the class and made sure that those students, those children got the bikes that they wanted for their holidays, which is, which is phenomenal, it just is a true testament to the culture here in Northborough, Southborough, and at the region for Algonquin. I'm shifting on to library, many of our departments received quarter-nine grants, which is extremely exciting. I point to the library because they created this fun little one called Puzzle Mania, it is a stress-free, non-tech environment, and where students come together and play what we would call like the old-fashioned game- what we would call like the old-fashioned games. It is growing exponentially in popularity. The kiddos put their phones away, they put their technology away, and they come together and they sit down and they play these games, they collaborate, they interact, they talk face-to-face and not through their phones. Super exciting work that's happening in the library, and the kiddos want to be here and they want to do it. In our math depart, in our math update, I wanted to give a shout out to two of our students who earned a perfect score, freshman math team. So that's fantastic, we scored third overall, but it's really exciting to see our students shining in math. Our Science National Honor Society took on a huge initiative with our Physical Plant Department and Mr. Gorman, seated to my right, they are initiating recycling in the cafeteria. They used the student pep rally to start this initiative, they had mobiles, they have flyers, they have posters, and the whole goal is to educate our current student body on the benefits of recycling. And so now in the cafeteria, you'll see the double barrels, the kiddos know what means what and how to recycle, and, you know, create that overall environmental best practices. But also, we're creating student leaders to push each other forward and to take, you know, concern and put it into action, put a plan into action, sustain it. Super, super exciting. And then the last update I added was one from administration. As we push to continue positive communication, we have created, shout out to Ms. Tontinato, a specific student newsletter. And in the newsletter, it's links to videos highlighting student, you know, events, showcasing student accomplishments, student announcements, all around student specifics. And what they do, what Michelle does, is she emails it out using the student emails, so that kiddos can get that monthly update about what's going on with their peers and what exciting stuff is going on with our classes. So I definitely wanted to make sure that I showcased that right at the end. Per usual, very jam-packed, busy at Algonquin.
That's right.
There's always a lot going on.
Anybody have any comments? Any discussion? Superintendent Johnson?
I think Dr. Walsh has done an amazing job at bringing all facets of the school together to be involved in one another's work. The orchestra pit during the play was outstanding, and we historically have not used our own musicians, musicians in the orchestra pit. So to see them in tuxes and lead the performance musically with great spirit was a magical moment, because it's been some time since our students have been in the pit completely. And I think that was a great step forward, as long, as well as a lot of the, the activities you discussed and shared. And I would have to say that I met Dr. Walsh this morning at about quarter of 7:00, and that enthusiasm lingers into the night, even when she's texting in the midnight hour. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I went to see the musical Legally Blonde, it was, it was, it was so entertaining, and it was, it was awesome to see, and I was glad to see the orchestra pit, once again, filled with our students. Wasn't too long ago that that was the case, and I'm glad to see it return that way. And it's, it's really great to see everyone involved, and I didn't realize that the students made the, I knew they did the sets, I had read that on, in the newspaper, but I didn't realize that they also did all the costumes. So that's, it's really getting everyone involved, get the enthusiasm, and, and it was, it was great, great to see.
I'd just like to give a shout out to the community members that I'm familiar with from Northborough, that I see their names into your principal's report. One was Terri Kreen, who came into your Applied Arts and Technology, and she's a, she's always been involved in Northborough schools, having kids about the same age, and she is a famous, I think she's the famous quilter of Northborough. And it was, and she donates her quilts, which are just absolutely beautiful in everything that she does. She always has a touch in something, but it was nice to see that she was coming into the, into the classroom and sharing her talents with the kids, it's very valuable. And then on the first page, I wanted to know if, under academics, from Endeavor Robotics, was, it said Jeff Amberson. Is that the, Jeff Amberson, who is the selectman in Northborough?
Correct.
It was.
Yeah.
So it's great, I mean, it's great to see. You have parents now whose kids have graduated, but they're coming back and giving, I think that's really wonderful. It, it shows that they still have, they feel home here, and they want to give their talents to the students coming up, so, and thank you for making it so welcoming for them to come in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then I guess we'll move on to the other ones.
Enrollments are in your packet, no significant changes from last month. This month, we have added the NESDEC enrollments, and just today, we received part of the narrative, we received it for two districts, not the regional district, so hopefully we can include that in the packet next month. The high school is sort of at the end of the pathway, and the numbers that NESDEC provides have so many variables along the way by the time they, you know, move on to the high school, that it's important for us to maintain our own internal enrollment projections as we do, and use NESDEC as one more indicator, as we do. So they're in the packets for us to consider this year. Also in your packet, if I can, is the FY18 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of November 30th, and as a customer, we would ask for consideration for a vote to approve until audited.
I move that we accept the Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of November 30th.
Second. Until audited.
Move by Paul, second by Dan. Any questions? Those in favor? That passes unanimously.
And with that, the statement of revenue is also in your packet. I think last month, we commented that we were 50% along the way in terms of our collections, and we still see that we're trending in a positive direction. So we would also ask, please, that you vote to approve until audited.
We do, we audit it.
We usually do them together, but-
Okay.
So I'll move that we accept the statement of revenue for the Northborough Southern Regional School District dated November 30th, 2017, until it's audited.
Move by Paul, second by Dan. Any comments? That passes unanimously.
Also in your packet, already approved and so voted, so this is just distribution, the budget priorities, which will certainly become very important to us next month as we present preliminary budget numbers. That's just for distribution purposes. The budget calendar is also in your packet. We continue to add different meetings that have taken place. We recently attended the Northborough Financial Trend Monitoring Meeting, which provided for us a tremendous snapshot in terms of the financial health of Northborough, and last evening, I had the privilege of attending the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and equally informative, and certainly both will guide our work as we prepare to put together the regional budget. We had already printed it.
I know, but I'm just saying it's safe.
Yes, absolutely. So noted. And we have also a budget discussion, and this is very exciting. On December 9th, we had a meeting of our Operational Budget Subcommittee, and David Eisenfeld, our Bond Counsel for UniBank, was very insightful, informative, and had a lot of information to share with the Operational Subcommittee about the potential of reissuance of our bonds. It's been 10 years, 2008, the bonds were issued, and we find ourselves in a position that we could enter a favorable market to reissue those bonds. Paul, I know you've-
So, I mean, you know, it, the simile is refinancing your mortgage, you know? When we first got the bonds for, for this building, there's a, there's a period of time where they won't let you refi, and that, that period is now over. The interest market out there is better than it was at the time, it makes all the sense in the world to not take any chances, refinance now while we can, there's a, there was some significant savings on the table for us, and, you know, we pretty much instructed the guy to go ahead and continue to file the paperwork and move it forward. It was hundreds of thousands, yeah.
A year, for 10 years?
For the same term we're currently in, or was that term extended?
Same term.
No, same term. So it's very similar to, just kind of refine, you know, in my mind, I just kept thinking about, last time I refinanced a mortgage, you know, it's, you're paying X today, tomorrow you're paying a little bit smaller than X, and it's really just kind of terrific, because the interest rates have changed, and you borrow the money to pay that bond off, and then you have that mortgage off, and then you have a new one for the same period, co-terminis, so.
Now, I would just have to say, our new District Treasurer, Christine Teague, has been very proactive.
She was all over it, all over.
She started talking about this last year, good opportunity, and she's very knowledgeable, having done similar activity in Dover Sherburne, so she's ahead of this and is excited about this possibility. And I think the date, the target date was March, somewhere between March 13th.
I mean, there's, you know, there's always the possibility, if you think rates are going to change favorably, you wait, but it just doesn't seem prudent. There was just an awful lot of money on the table, and, you know, it just, I mean, the more we kicked it around, it just, it really seemed like it was the right thing to, to do, and just pull the trigger.
I mean, I, I agree, I attended the meeting as well, and, you know, the interest rates, we all know, they're probably as low as they're going to be, and it is the opportunity that we get in 10 years, and we're lucky that our chance in 10 years coincided with this favorable interest, interest environment. And to me, I see only, interest rates only going up from here, but that's just me.
I think it's encouraging to think that through this, we can support the work of our two towns with potential reduction in assessments, so.
Mm-hmm.
More, more to come.
More to come.
More to come.
But it's moving along.
And speaking of more to come, the budget discussion for FY19, we are in the process of finalizing our preliminary numbers, we have seen no numbers come our way or any remote projections around what Chapter 70 might look like at this point. Certainly, minimum local contributions are yet unknown. I will say that the discussion we've had here with the admin team is a level service budget, no anticipation of requesting any staffing. I think last year, we jumped, leaped forward with putting in place some of the positions-